Today is Thursday, November 13th, 2025. This is our regular 7:00 PM city council meeting. I call this meeting to order. We'll kick things off this evening with our opening prayer. This will be led by Mr. Phil Anderson from Bethel Church of Talmage, followed by our pledge of allegiance. I'd like to welcome Merit Badge Counselor Rebecca Grigsby as the Talmage Troop 361 will be presenting our American flag during our pledge of allegiance following the opening prayer.
Let's pray. Lord, your word says that our leaders are a gift to us and that we should lift them up to you regularly, and we do that now. We ask you, Lord, that you would bless them, give them wisdom where it is needed, Lord Jesus, and insight where that is needed as well. We pray, God, that you would bless them personally and that every need that they might have, Lord God, may you need. In this meeting, Lord, please be at the center of it. I ask you and will thank you for all that you do. In your name, Jesus, amen.
The Talmage Troop 361 would like to present the American flag.
Dilegence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which sustains one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right. Next item up is our roll call. Clerk, please call the roll.
Jonathan Bolis.
Here.
Christine Sippa.
Here.
Jessica Epstein.
Here.
Donald Pavlik.
Here.
Tracy Pletcher.
Here.
Ted Roy.
Here.
Nick Rubino.
Here.
All right. All seven counselors are present this evening. Moving on to item four, this is correcting and adopting the previous meeting minutes from October 9th, 2025. We are in receipt of the October 9th, 2025 meeting minutes. Just to call out that the October 23rd meeting minutes will be provided at our next regular city council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the October 9th meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to adopt October 9th, 2025, regular meeting minutes. Any discussion or questions on the minutes as presented? All right. Please call the roll.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes. The October 9th, 2025 meeting minutes are adopted by a vote of seven to zero. All right. Item five, our financial reports. We are in receipt of our fire and EMS fund transfer in the amount of $285,000, street maintenance repair in the amount of $206,000, bond retirement from the general fund in the amount of $80,840, police pension in the amount of $87,500, bond retirement from the Safety Services Income Tax Fund in the amount of $162,270, bond retirement from Talmage Reserve Incentive District TIF in the amount of $51,575 to council on 10/31/25, the appropriations report, fund report, and revenue report for the period ending 10/31/25 to council on 11/6/25, the October financials report to council on 11/6/25, the Talmage Recreation Center Profit and Loss Report for the period ending 10/31/25 to council on 11/6/25, the income tax comparisons for the period ending 10/31/25 to council on 11/6/25, the income tax by source report for the month of September to council on 11/6/25, and the revenue comparisons for major funds for the period ending 10/31/25 to council on 11/6/25, and lastly, the consolidated investment portfolio for the period ending 10/31/25 to council on 11/6/25.
I'll make a motion to approve the reports, right in committee.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the financial reports as presented. Any discussion from council or questions for administration? All right. Please call the roll.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
All right. The financial reports are accepted by a vote of seven to zero. Thank you. Next item up are public hearings we have known this evening. Item seven, this is community input. This is the point in the meeting, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an item not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. All right. With agenda additions, matters referred this evening, we have two items on the agenda. The first one is our liquor license request for Crafty Steer LLC, 100 North Avenue, Suite 102, Talmage, requesting permit classes C2, C1, and D6.
Yes, good evening. I can address this request. Crafty Steer is permitting the, or requesting the C1 permit, which is beer only in original sealed container for carryout, C2 permit, which is the wine and mixed beverages in sealed containers for carryout, a D6 permit, which is sale of intoxicating liquor on Sunday for the same sales privileges the permit holder would have Monday through Saturday. We do note there is nothing in Talmage zoning preventing it, and therefore, we do not request, or we do not recommend a hearing. And just of note for everyone's benefit, Crafty Steer is a specialty food store, so requesting these permits to sell these items for carryout only goes in line with what their business establishment is, is complementary to their business establishment.
Do you need a motion to approve?
Yes.
Yeah. I'll make a, like, say, I'll make a motion to approve not requesting a permit.
Hearing.
Hearing.
I'll second that.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to not, to request not holding a hearing. Any discussion from council or administration? All right. Call the roll.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
All right. The motion passes by a vote of seven to zero to recommend not holding a hearing for this. All right. Next up on agenda additions, we have our monthly certificate of appreciation. This evening, we have our... This evening, we have our certificate of appreciation that will be awarded to Renee Crichton with West Avenue Tavern, and that will be presented by Councilwoman Tracy Pletcher.
Thank you. This evening, it is my pleasure to recognize Renee Crichton, owner of West Avenue Tavern, for all the support and dedication she provides to our community. Renee gives a lot of her time supporting many of the Talmage school organizations such as the pep club and many of the school sports teams by participating in the dine and donate program and sponsoring and preparing their team meals. She is also a supporter of local organizations who help those in need, such as taking up a collection for the Talmage Good Neighbors and donating baskets to Heaven's Helping Hands. She is a member of the Talmage Rotary and the Talmage Chamber of Commerce. In talking with Ms. Crichton, I asked the obvious question that I'm sure she gets a lot, and that is what made her and her family decide to buy the restaurant? She gave me several restaurants, but her biggest reason was that it was a local community place. Renee fully embraces the Talmage community by giving the best thing that anyone can give, and that is her time. Therefore, it is my honor to present Renee Crichton of West Avenue Tavern with the certificate of appreciation as a small way to say thank you for all the time that you give to our community.
Okay, smile. Thank you.
Speech.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Renee.
All right. Next item up is our reports of administrative officers. We'll kick things off with a report from Mayor Kilwai.
Thank you. I will be very, very brief this evening. I just came back from a 50-year celebration for Bob McGuire that has McGuire Schlecklenberg Legal Group here in Talmage. They're celebrating 50 years of business in Talmage. I think that's an amazing feat to have, so I was very honored to be able to present him with a proclamation this evening. I'm just sorry that I couldn't stay longer than what I could. Most of you are also aware of the food drive that we're doing right now, this food drive that the City of Talmage is doing. We're collecting food for our Dare to Share program and all of the Talmage food pantries and the Akron Canton Regional Food Bank. This will be going on through November 21st. We are collecting food here at City Hall, at the Talmage Rec Center, and at both of the fire stations and the police station. So if anyone is inclined to donate, to help those that are in need right now, we would greatly appreciate it, and that is getting passed out as we go on, so that the food can get to the people that need it as soon as possible. We're also going to be having a cold weather gear collection. We'll start November 10th through December the 14th. It'll be here at City Hall. There's a list of certain types of cold weather gear that is being requested, and all of this will go to the Peter Moran Center, and that will be distributed to some of those that are the homeless that need clothing and warm weather gear for the, to get through the winter. We did this last year, and it was a great success, so we're doing it again this year. We do it with a number of the other communities in our area, so it's a great regional support for the Peter Moran Center. And also, on Saturday, December 6th, we will have a drive-through event for that event, so we will be here at City Hall collecting, if anyone has any warm weather gear that they would like to donate, we'll have somebody here, and the donations will get directly to the center on December the 6th as well. The only other thing that I would like to give a brief update on is a recent call that was handled by the Talmage Fire Department. On November 5th, our crews were dispatched to Glen Oak Drive for a tree trimmer who was injured and struck about 30 to 40 feet on a tree. When they arrived, they found the individual was semi-conscious and unable to move, but he was secured in the V of two large limbs after being struck by a branch that he had just cut off. He was also appropriately tied off. So Talmage crew positioned Tower One in the driveway, raised the elevated platform to the patient, and safely removed him from the tree and onto the platform. They then lowered him to the ground and transferred him to a stretcher. And so I just think that was a very unusual but very well-executed save that we had from our Talmage Fire Department. This response involved Talmage Battalion Two, Truck Two, Tower One, and also Magador Medic One helped as well. And so everyone did a great, a great outstanding job on the scene, and I could not be prouder of our firefighters, so I just wanted to share that with everyone. Pending your questions, I don't have anything else to share this evening, so if there's any questions?
I just wanted to follow up on that comment because I actually received a call from the neighbor of that home, a constituent, and what a great job they did calming the neighbors, because it was a very scary scene for them witnessing that. And they thought that that was very, very kind to, to help kind of ease, ease them as well, what they were witnessing, so thank you to the...
Our fire department is really top-notch, and they, they look at the whole situation.
They're very professional.
And they're very professional, and we're very fortunate to have them. Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next up is our Director of Administration, Mr. Ignizito.
Good evening. I will save my remarks for the Finance Committee unless you have any questions for me now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next up is Ms. Poole with our Economic Development.
Good evening, everyone. Happy to share a brief update, starting with the state and regional level. On November 5th, I was fortunate to participate in a newly-formed Portage Development Board Sites and Building Group. The goal of this group is to identify and discuss issues related to helping companies find and utilize sites and buildings, so that's right in the wheelhouse of economic development, and that has a wide range of constituents from construction companies to the county commissioner, and it's a, it's a great way for us all to collaborate to lift up the opportunities in the area. On the 10th of this month, we had a meeting with Brimfield, and I have an update on a few pending new openings in JED, in our JED, our Joint Economic Development District between Brimfield and Talmage, and these are ranging of various sizes. So we have Titan Electric, which was a smaller business that was a home-based business moving to a Magador Road location, Badger Construction and Roofing, those are two examples of smaller businesses that are for employees and growing. We also have Buffalo Wild Wings Go, which is going to be a takeout version of Buffalo Wild Wings in the former GameStop store out on Cascades. And then a quick update on the VA Imaging and Infusion Center. We're pleased to hear the soft opening will be this month. The official date for our grand opening is pending. We expect to hear something now that the government is back open. Today, I was fortunate to attend an OEDA webinar, that's the Ohio Economic Development Association. A big part of my role as economic developer is helping refer businesses to the right organizations and also understand how to navigate all the different partnerships that come into play. So today's webinar was on a best practice case study in revitalization, which was really interesting. And then I was also fortunate to attend the Team Portage meeting, which featured an update from Magnet, which is the manufacturing advocacy and growth network, and they were able to share some of the programming that they have going on, which I can in turn share with our businesses right here in Talmage. And then from the Talmage business standpoint, we currently are at a count of 55 BREs, that's the Business Retention and Expansion Program that we do. We know that most of the business growth is coming from our current businesses, so we're proud to have 55 as it's to date and pushing for more in December. Pending any questions, that concludes my update.
All right. Thank you very much for that report. All right. Moving on to our Director of Public Service, Mr. Rohr.
Good evening. Just a couple of updates. Macapul, the floor's been painted. Everything's done there. Turned out pretty good, and then the slide structure itself, everything was sandblasted and it was touched up and looks pretty good. Moving on, the Talmage leaf program, you can see all the colors. We've hit every neighborhood but one so far since November 3rd, and that's that East Garwood neighborhood there that's kind of like a dash line, but so far, the new, the lack of having any schedule seems to be working, so just keep raking your leaves out to the edge of the road, and we'll grab them. Couple of things, we have the ordinance 2025-82, that's a water agreement. Want to go over this again. You can see the old agreement had a 30-year term with no opt-out. The water rate was 22.5% above the Akron customer rate. You had JED-Z on Britton, which is the Britton Road Corridor, and then there's a 25% income tax in the annexed area, and that's out there in Portage County. So that was the old agreement. That's expired. The new agreement is a 50-year term with an opt-out beginning at year 20 with a five-year notice. The important thing for our customers is the water rate stays the same. It's 22.5% above the Akron customer rate. The JED-Z has been removed. There's a 1% income tax in the Talmage service area. There's an annual user fee, and there's a one-time additional payment to reconcile billing and tax withholding issues from the last agreement. So that's the ordinance on the water agreement, and I believe Akron presented it at first reading, and they were planning on passing it by the end of the month here.
And that 1% is frozen, right? It's from the standpoint of...
Yes.
On the tax?
It's 1% of the tax in the service area.
Okay, so if it goes...
In the general fund, so it goes with the...
Okay, all right.
We can have more questions when we get to that ordinance. The AMATS Funding Application Ordinance, 2025-89, I'd like to ask that it get passed. It's at second reading. This is the area up of, up in Monroe Falls at North Moreland and the Metro Parks. It's improving the intersection there. The traffic signals are tripped by the actuator. This will be the radar ones that recognizes how large that queue is getting. It'll make it more efficient, and it's improving the crosswalks. You can see our share, it'd be $39,000. Now, keep in mind, this is just to submit the application. That's all this request is for. On our end, we also have an ordinance, 2025-91. This is the application to continue the East Avenue project. Remember, Phase One is from the Brimfield area to Monroe Road, and then this is Phase Two, and it's from Community Road to North, to North Monroe at the Rec Center. You can see our portion, that's the 20%, and this is also just requesting to submit the application. And I would like to ask this be passed at first reading as well, because those applications have already been submitted. Ordinance 25-92, this is for the demolition of the 111 West Avenue, which is the GTF, which was the old Y. We knew there was an old pool there, but we didn't know how it was ever handled as they tore down the building. You can see the pool was a rather deep pool, 10-foot. The pool was never actually removed, and so we had to bust that out, or you'd always have a quagmire there of holding water. Unfortunately, the fill was also a problem that they backfilled with. You can see the middle picture there, that black gray, that black material, that's an organic material. You can also see boulders, and there's metal. So what that was backfilled with was junk that had to get removed as well, so that's a change order of $22,400, which unfortunately, I've got to ask for, because we've already tore it down. Moving on, and that concludes my report for this evening, so... And if there's any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, our Director of Finance, Ms. Gilbreath.
Thank you, everyone. You received the financial reports for the month of October. Income tax continues to remain pretty consistent, about 2.5% to 3% ahead of where we were last year, and coming in about 2% above a budget, so that is good. I am continuing to monitor the salary and wages appropriation. After my initial analysis, I felt comfortable that I could complete the month of November before I would need to come back. It does appear that the... The insurance being, having a 0% increase versus what we budgeted is covering a large portion of the additional wages that were in excess of what we budgeted on that end, but there may be a couple departments that are smaller that kind of don't have a lot of room within that, and the police pension fund is likely going to need a reappropriation, but since I felt comfortable getting through November, I could come back with a more accurate number with only two pay periods left. So you will see that in the December meeting. Otherwise, if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
All right. Thank you very much. Last up, our Director of Law, Ms. Raiber.
Thank you. I just wanted to report that we had a very successful drug takeback day in October. We collected over 150 pounds of unused or unwanted prescription or over-the-counter medication. I want to especially thank Don Hoff, who runs that and has, has it down to a science at this point, as well as our auxiliary officers that help with that event every time we hold it. I also wanted to report that Melody Bryant, my, one of my assistant law directors, is going to be departing us unfortunately after seven years. She is taking a position as a magistrate elsewhere, so we wish her the best as she continues her career, but we, she will be missed. She worked on a lot of large projects, including ones that we still have coming, so I will especially miss her as we proceed with the recodification, for example. I also wanted to just note that I appreciated our new Clerk of Counsel, Ms. Osborne's assistance in rearranging the agenda. You'll probably note that you see things slightly differently than you had before. So previously, the hyperlinks to the various ordinance, hyperlinks, were in the front of your header and in your agenda. We've moved them to the bottoms to avoid confusion, so when you're calling out or reading into the record, the ordinance is, you just need to read the title of the ordinance. You don't need to read that it's tracked or there's an exhibit. All that was just part of the hyperlink that differentiated the different documents that you had to reference, so those documents are now going to be underneath as hyperlinks, so you'll still have them available to you, but hopefully, will help avoid confusion when you're reading them into the record. So you just would read the ordinance number and then the title of the ordinance. And if you would like, you're welcome to indicate the sponsor, and we do always note the hearings if we have any of those. So just kind of wanted to make that clarification, and again, thank, thank our new clerk for working hard to, to make some adjustments, so thank you. End of report.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. That'll move us into our reports of standing committees of council of the whole. We will start things off with our Planning and Zoning Committee. I'll pass the mic to Councilwoman Pletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Bolis. I will open Planning and Zoning Committee. We have two items on the agenda this evening for second reading. The first one, ordinance 2025-86. This is scheduled for public hearing on 12/11/25 at 7:01 PM. Amending and supplementing Part 11, Planning and Zoning Code, Section 1104.05D, Use Regulation Tables, Adding Section 1104.07E, 33.1, Use Regulations, Vape and/or Smoke Establishment, Section 1104.07E, 33.2, Use Regulations, Vape and/or Smoke Shops, Appendix A.8 of the Talmage Codified Ordinance. So any questions or comments?
If I may, I'll just note that there is an amendment in front of you tonight, the recommendation coming out of Planning and Zoning Commission, so I would ask for your consideration of the amendment this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment in ordinance 2025-86.
I'll second it.
Tracy P...
Hold, just to, just restate the motion, right?
It's a motion to amend?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
The amendment passes seven to zero. And we'll leave this on for the public hearing for 12/11/25 at 7:01 PM. The next item, ordinance 2025-90. This is also set for public hearing on 12/11/25 at 7:02 PM. Approving and granting a conditional zoning certificate to applicant/owner Moore Plaza LLC for Burning Bush Church for a religious place of worship consisting of 11,000 square feet in a portion of 23 Midway Plaza. Any questions or comments?
Is this also amended?
Yes, I would just state that you also have an amendment in front of you, again, coming from the recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission following their meeting.
I'll make a motion... I'll make a motion to approve the amendment, ordinance 2025-90.
I'll second. Call the roll, please. Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Okay, the amendment passes seven to zero. And we'll leave this ordinance on for public hearing on December 11th, 2025 at 7:02 PM. Are there any other additional matters or items that we'd like to discuss? Hearing done, I will close committee.
Thank you very much. Next up is our Finance Committee with Councilman Pavlik.
Well, you call the Finance Committee to order. The Finance Committee deals with budget appropriations, reappropriations, bonds, franchises, investments, and expenditures. Currently, we have two ordinances on the agenda today, both in second reading. First up, an ordinance 2025-87, where a public hearing will be held on December 11th, 2025 at 7:03. It's adopting a budget for various funds of the City of Talmage, Ohio, for current expenditures, expenses and expenditures during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2026, appropriating the necessary funds for the administration thereof, authorizing transfers between funds, and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Mayor Kilway. Mayor Kilway or Mr. Iglesino, would you have any comments?
So yes, we did just have our recent budget meeting, and based on your recommendations, I know there's some amendments that are being made, and so I will pass this on to Director of Administration, Mr. Iglesino, for him to go further on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Councilman Pavlik, council members. In front of you this evening, I left a brief note with attachments. In front of you, you'll find the legal levels of control for ordinance 2025-87. It is an amendment. I will be asking, respectfully asking for consideration to amend this ordinance. It reflects the intent of council as discussed during our work session on November 5th. The changes that have been made currently, currently reflect a total of $221,000. $142,000 of that is capital. The breakdown of those changes reflect an increase of $5,000 to the Richardson Trust Fund in the Manager of Information System, an increase of $142,000 in capital outlay for a cooling system with redundancy for our server, our server room. And then in the mayor administration for economic development, an increase of $74,000 further broken out, for $50,000 for the CIC, as we discussed last week, and then $24,000 additional funding for the in-site contract. Behind that document, you'll find the minimum, I'm sorry, you'll find the 2026 budget analysis with the minimum fund balance report. The only line item here that has been adjusted is the 101 general fund balance, which has changed by the $221,000. The anticipated ending balance, you can see there now, is $6,488,789.78, and our minimum fund balance of $4,347,152,000. And we are, we exceed our minimum fund balance by over $2.14 million. The document behind that is just the minimum fund balance worksheet to show how we, how I arrived at the minimum fund balance, just showing my homework, if you will. And then finally, the last document that you have is the capital budget document for the server room cooling system upgrade with redundancy. That's its actual official name in, in our budget system. And then I just made a note there in the different tabs where you can place those in your book. Pending the outcome of tonight's meeting, I will update the line item budget that you have, the fund level budget, the long blue and white sheet, and I will present, I will provide that to council prior to our final, the third reading of this ordinance.
Okay, so why don't we just get the amendments out of the way? I'd like to make an amendment to ordinance 2025-87 in line item 101 dot 705 dash 53 400, under economic development.
Councilman Pavlik, before you continue, there, you do have presented to you this evening the amendment, which should have everything in the appropriate line. So because you gave it to us in advance, we were able to prepare an actual document that has all of those, so instead of you having to go through each one, they should all be as you have requested at the, at the meeting that you had, the work session that you had.
Awesome, because last year, I know, I had to.
Correct, but this.
Find the account, and I was, everyone remembered, I was flipping through.
We learned a little bit from last year. Thank you.
Second time through, the Finance Director, Law Director, and Mayor made it easier this year for us.
Awesome.
I was given guidance.
Well, then, then I will, I will make a motion to amend ordinance 2025-87 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the council floor? Hearing none, Planet Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Okay, with that, ordinance, the amendment to ordinance 2025-87 passes with a motion of seven to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any questions on the budget? I have one for Ms. Gilbright. Ms. Gilbright, for the estimated beginning unencumbered balances?
Yes.
Was that nine-month actual, or is that just your projected? I know, as you say, estimated, but how do you come up with those estimated numbers?
So at the end of September, I take what we have actually spent and analyze what I think we're going to spend for the rest of the year, based on payroll, based on what I know is coming, that kind of thing. Then I also take the revenue and I, after nine months, and analyze based on prior year revenue and expenses.
What comes in?
What comes in. So I try to take as much actual data as we have on the balances at that time, and then do basically a three-month projection of where I think we're going to end up with those.
Okay, so when you made the comment that we're running 2% to 3% ahead in tax collections, do you feel that that will hold for the remainder of the year? Or is it, you kind of earmark, you know what's going to come in in October, November, December, based on past history?
Um, I look at past history, but I also, you know, consider, if we're way far ahead, I'm gonna, you know, take that into, be more generous with it, but I, I definitely look at, you know, what did we take in last year? Where were we at with those last three months? Look for any strange things that may have happened in those periods before I project out what those three years are. So I look at what we're doing this year versus what happened last year and make those judgment calls.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? If not, we will table, we will go to third reading on ordinance 2025-87, with the public hearing scheduled on December 11th, 2025 at 7:03.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next up is ordinance 2025-92. It's appropriating additional amounts for the demolition of 111 West Avenue, needed and provided for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Mayor Kilway. Mayor Kilway, any comments?
Nothing further than what Mr. Rohr has already expressed, you know, it's, it's been done.
Is there any comments or questions on ordinance 2025-92? Is there a motion?
I'll move to adopt ordinance 2025-92.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Is there any comments, further comments from council floor? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Okay, with that, ordinance 2025-92 passes with a motion of seven to zero.
Thank you.
And I stand corrected, there's one more ordinance that was on the second page, and that's ordinance 2025-93, appropriating additional amounts for general contractual expenditures and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Director of Public Service, Mr. Rohr. Mr. Rohr, any comments?
Yes, so this is an oversight on my behalf for the 2025 budget. We got the bids in for the mowing and the fertilization in November, and I never adjusted the budget to the new prices. So the mowing went up by about 55,000, and the fertilization went up by about 9,000 and some change, so I need 64,750 to pay the bills.
Okay, is there any comments or questions, Mr. Rohr, of the administration? Hearing none, is there a, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion on ordinance 2025-93.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Okay, with that, ordinance 2025-93 passes with a motion of seven to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anything else that needs to be brought forth to Finance Committee? Hearing none, I close committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is our Personnel Committee with Councilwoman Sippa.
Thank you. Personnel Committee deals with personnel labor relations, insurance claims, rules of council, and state statutes. I call Personnel to order. We have second reading of resolutions for ordinance 2025-88. A public hearing is scheduled on December 11th, 2025 at 7:04 PM, establishing the number of non-collective bargaining employees by department and position pursuant to RC 731 dash, or point 08, and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor is Mayor Kilway.
Any comments, Mayor?
Um, so again, this is one of the ones that we discussed during our budget meeting. The, there's the track changes with, with the changes that we're requesting. If council has any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time. Do you want me to go through them all again? I can. It's up to you.
Any questions? No?
Okay, we will leave in second reading for a public hearing on December 11th, 2025. Is there anything else that needs to come before Personnel? Hearing none, I close Personnel.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move along to our Community Issues Committee with Councilman Roy.
Thank you. I like to open up personal committees. The Personal Committee deals with, eh, wrong one, sorry. The Community Issues deals with Parks, Recreation, Civic Affairs, and Liaison between Council and Recreation Board, and our governmental affairs. We're at third reading tonight with ordinance 2025-80, amending and supplementing ordinance 2024-67 to amend rates, charges, and fees for all recreational facilities and providing for immediate enactment, sponsored by Mayor Kilway. You have anything you'd like to add?
Um, I think we went over this quite extensively, again, during the budget meeting. Were there any specific questions that anyone had? I think we addressed all the questions that you did have in regards to the different months for the pole banners at the Rec Center. There will be four seasons, December through February, March through May, June through August, and September through November. Looking at anything else that was also.
I know that.
Yeah, so the outdoor, field rental specialty rates as well. The tournament maintenance fee is going up to $75 per, per day, up to two fields, and then goes up to $225 per day for three or more fields. On the term, terminate, the tournament maintenance fee applies to all city-owned fields. So like when renting Kent Dry Field, an additional fee will be charged for the cleanout of the Portageon for non-Little League-sponsored events. This fee will be equivalent to the fee, the additional cleaning. It's one fee per tournament. And then we already did also discuss the Summit DD Special Olympics, softball, baseball, are permitted to use the Challenger Field for practicing games at no charge.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-80.
Ms. Councilman Pavlik, if you can withdraw that motion, we need to adopt the amendment first, if you can move to amend.
Okay, I withdraw the passage of ordinance 2025-80, and I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to 2025-80.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
And now, if you want to have a motion to adopt?
We'd like to make a motion on ordinance 2025-80.
I will make a motion to pass ordinance 2025-80.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Can I have the roll?
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2025-80 passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
And that's it for, anybody else have anything else? If not, I will close committee. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is our Safety Committee with Council, Councilman Rubino.
Thank you. I open Safety Committee. Safety Committee deals with disaster services, communications, fire, and paramedics, police, and health. We currently have nothing on the agenda for a Safety Committee. Does anybody have anything they need to bring to safety? Hearing none, I close committee.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to our Public Service Committee with Councilwoman Epstein.
Thank you. I call Public Service Committee to order. The Public Service Committee deals with streets, highways, sidewalks, buildings, and improvements, water, sewer, electricity, gas, energy resources, recycling, waste, and trash. This evening at second reading, we have ordinance 2025-82. This is authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the City of Akron for water services, appropriating necessary funds, and providing for immediate enactment. The sponsor is Mayor Kilway. Mr. Rohr, I know that you had presented some information earlier in the meeting. Do you have anything else you want to add now?
Unless there's any questions from anybody.
Okay. And I did see, I had been watching the Akron council meetings and saw the same thing as you, that they are looking to pass this as well for their next council meeting. Do we have a motion here tonight?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-82.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
With that, mo- uh, ordinance 2025-82 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for all the information that you provided on that.
You're welcome.
Also at second reading, we have ordinance 2025-89, an ordinance allowing the mayor to apply for federal surface transportation block grant, funds programmed by the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study to improve certain streets for the State Route 91, North Moreland Road Project, and providing for immediate enactment. The sponsor for this ordinance is Director of Public Service, Mr. Rohr. Again, you gave a presentation at the last meeting and earlier tonight. I don't think you have anything else to add, but I'll ask.
I do not, thank you, though.
Okay. Is there a motion for this ordinance?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-89.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Yes.
With that, the ordinance 2025-89 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And last, at first reading this evening, we have Ordinance 2025-91. The ordinance and ordinance allowing the mayor to apply for... I lost my spot. I scrolled. I lost my spot. 2025-91, an ordinance allowing the mayor to apply for federal surface transportation block grant funds programmed by the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study to improve certain streets for the East Avenue Phase Two and providing for immediate enactment. Thank you, Mr. Rohr, for your help there.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 2025-91.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-91 also passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Those are all the ordinances we have before us this evening. Are there any additional items or matters referred for council or for this committee? All right, hearing done, I close committee.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is our reports of special committees, council operations committee. I have no report this evening. Next up is announcements. Any additional announcements? Other than, we had several announcements tonight during reports.
Yeah, yes, I do have one quick announcement. I'm so sorry. As many of you know, one of our very near and dear dentists in the area, Dr. Jerry Cisco, passed away. Not only was he my dentist, a near and dear friend, he's also family. My sister's related to him directly through his wife. He's such, such an amazing man that did so much. One of his last, his last item that he did was actually a dental procedure on a bishop from Africa. So he took care of many of the priests and bishops in the area for free at no charge. And he was not feeling well, and he came in and he performed the treatment and, you know, and then went home and passed away. So we're all very familiar with Dr. Cisco. He was a wonderful man and a close friend and family member to some of us as well. So I would ask for your condolences to his family on that. And also, many of you know Carol Collins, who was a receptionist for us. She also passed away this week. And that one really hits home. That one really hits home, too. She was a wonderful person. One of the kindest people I've ever met. And my heart goes out to her family as well. So that's all I can say right now.
All right. Any other, any other announcements, Mr. Pavlik? All right, we'll move to adjournment if there's no more announcements.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll. Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
All right, it is 7:54, and we are adjourned. Thank you.